Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 9th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for our own.
Okay, now we'll move on to the roll call of members. Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Yes. Councilman Kincaid.
President.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Messenger.
President.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes or edits to the minutes? Okay, we entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve that is a second.
Second.
Motion is a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, before we jump into our kind of general business side, we do have some swearing in of some new Lebanon police officers. So Chief Morgan, can you come forward, please?
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Tonight, I would like to introduce our three newest officers to the public, Michael Custis, Tyler Winings, and Brianna Shively. Officer Custis and Winings are both graduates of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy and have started their official duties with our department. Bree is coming to us from the Sheriff's Department where she was a dispatcher, reserve, and crime analyst for eight years. I am proud to announce all three of these officers have made the commitment to serve our community. The officers will be sworn in by Mayor Gentry, and they have each chosen someone special in their life to hold the Bible while they are sworn in. Michael, if you and your wife Felicia could come up here.
So, let me handle my immigration. There you go. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, James Michael Custis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and orders as of this law.
And all laws and orders of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
That's my vote. Congratulations. Thank you.
Michael.
I just wanted to thank the town council for giving me this opportunity to serve the Lebanon Police Department and the community. Thank you.
Welcome. Next will be Tyler, and holding the Bible for him will be his father, Ron.
Repeat after me. Aye, Tyler Winings.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and orders of the City of Lebanon.
And all laws and ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to be a part of the community and to serve the citizens and everyone, visitors of Lebanon. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next is Bree, and holding the Bible for her will be her husband Daniel, and I believe she's bringing her daughters up also.
Yeah. I love your dress. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Hi, Brianna Shively.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
And all laws and ordinances of the City of Lebanon.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the city council and the city of Lebanon for allowing me to join the police department. I look forward to serving you all.
Welcome. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, chief, very much. All right, that concludes the opening of the meeting. Next, we'll move on to old business. Item I have here is ordinance 2020-13, which is a general bond obligation. Actually, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm going to pause real quick, let everybody leave the room that would like to. It was interesting stuff tonight, if you want to stay, just saying. I think we're good here now. All right, ordinance 2020-13, general bond obligation. Again, this is on second reading. We also have a public hearing associated with this ordinance as well. So, Rob, I'll have you read the ordinance first, then we'll have council discussion, and then open public hearing as well.
Okay. Thank you, mayor, council. Again, this is ordinance number 2020-13, which is authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purposes of providing funds to pay the cost of certain capital improvements within the city and related expenses in connection therewith. This council now determines its necessary and proper exercise of the powers to finance all or a portion of cost of the construction, acquisition, installation, and equipping of park improvements, including but not limited to lighting improvements and all related expenses in connection therewith. This council has been advised that the estimated cost of the project and related expenses necessary to be incurred, including the cost of issuance of general obligation bonds to finance the project, will be in an amount of $750,000. And the council finds it does not have sufficient funds available to provide for in the existing budget and tax levy which may be applied to the cost of the project, whereas this council deems it advisable to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $750,000. There will be, again, a notice of a hearing on the appropriation of the proceeds of the bonds, as the mayor indicated right after the reading here. And this ordinance, again, as we talked about last time, has several sections. I won't go through each one of them, but Section 1 talks about the determination, the proceed, the intent, the authorization, and the detail of the bonds, and it goes through several pages therewith until we get to essentially the form of the bond, starts at the bottom of page 2, and that is several pages as well. And we get through, Section 3, we'll talk about the procedure of the sale of the bonds, and then it talks about the preparation of the bonds and what happens after the bonds are paid off, as well as the covenant to levy tax. And there are some additional representations that are made, and what the city represents, again, the debt limit is not exceeded, and Section 11 talks about the general appropriation that we're going to have the public hearing for in the amount not to exceed $750,000.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions for Rob before I open the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, then, I would open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-13. If you have any public comment, feel free to step forward and share your thoughts. All right, seeing no sudden movement at this time, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2020-13. Any council discussion?
No, sir.
This time, then, I would entertain a motion on ordinance 2020-13.
I'll move ordinance 2020-13, general bond obligation.
Be approved?
Second.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 2020-13. To approve, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? An ordinance 2020-13 is approved unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, that concludes why I have our old businesses. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay, on to new business, then. First item up is ordinance 2020-14, New Cold Project Bond, and this ordinance is on first reading tonight. Molly, I guess, again. Not everybody was here to hear you earlier, so we'll have you do it again. So, this is also, this is Molly Whitehead from the Boone County Economic Development Corporation, talking about Project Isle/New Cold.
Yes. Good evening, councilmembers. Molly Whitehead, Executive Director of the Boone EDC. As the mayor mentioned, this is Project Isle. Company's name is New Cold. New Cold is a cold storage facility. This would, if it lands in Lebanon, be the second cold storage facility that we would have in the Lebanon Business Park. This does have a really good advantage for us in attracting food-related companies, which is a target sector for us, as food manufacturers are often looking for that cold storage space. As I mentioned to the RDC tonight, this is not a done deal. This bond issuance is very much a key component of that deal being completed, but the customer, or rather, New Cold is also relying on customer contracts as well and needs kind of all of the pieces to kind of fit into place before making a formal announcement. But that said, what we're looking at for New Cold, they would go into the far southwest corner of the Lebanon Business Park, about 55 acres. Their facility would be over 350,000 square feet. It's pretty tall, so that's where actually a lot of the square footage is going to come into play. It is a highly automated facility, and that's reflective in not only their job numbers, they're anticipating around 150 people employed there by 2023, and making an average wage of $30 an hour, which is about $10 over what Boone County's average wage is. The capital investment for this project, looking at over $99 million for real property investment and over $50 million for personal property investment. This is the largest deal that we have seen in recent times, and just judging on the economy and where we're currently seeing lead activity, not many of these opportunities, these opportunities don't come by anyway. These opportunities really are not going to be coming by any time in the near future. So it's a really great opportunity for the city of Lebanon, and we're, we've worked on this project for, since August of 2019, so we're anxious for it to kind of come to fruition and be able to make that announcement, but would very much appreciate your support in this process. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Molly from the council?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob, could you read ordinance 2020-14 on first reading, please?
Yes. Mayor, council, this is ordinance 2020-14, authorizing the city of Lebanon to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds, New Cold Project, and authorizing and approving other actions in connection therewith. Again, as Molly Whitehead just discussed, New Cold USA has advised the city and the Lebanon Economic Development Commission that it proposes a city-issue taxable economic development revenue bonds in one or more series in the amount of $9,800,000 for the purposes of financing economic development facilities consisting of the construction, acquisition, installation, and equipping of approximately 384,300 square feet of dark, high bay oxygen, reduced, highly automated, large-scale cold storage warehouse with an estimated 10,000 pallet capacity situated on 55 acres. The project will be or is physically connected to the New Cold allocation area. The Redevelopment Commission of Lebanon has or is expected to adopt a resolution pledging incremental property taxes generated in the allocation area. And the financing of this project results in the diversification of industry, the creation and retention of jobs, as well as the creation and retention of business opportunities. And on November 9th, this day of 2020, the Economic Development Commission earlier conducted a public hearing in accordance with the Act and adopted its resolution, finding that the financing of a portion of the cost of the project complies with the purposes and provisions of the Indiana statutes, and such financing will be a benefit to the health and general welfare of the city, and that project will not have a material adverse competitive effect on similar facilities. You have been provided a copy of the financing agreement in the trust indenture. Therefore, this council will find, determine, and ratify that the financing and reimbursement of economic development facilities referred to in the financing documents and the issuance and the sale of bonds will result, again, in the diversification of industry, the creation and retention of business, will serve a public purpose and provide a benefit to the health and general welfare of the city, and it will comply with the provisions of the Act and is in the public interest of the city to take such lawful actions. Further, that this action will not have a material adverse competitive effect on any similar facilities. The proposed financing of the portion of the project and certain costs related to the issuance of the bonds, including capitalized interest, if necessary, are all described in the financing documents by the issuance of the bonds under the Act. Again, the city is authorizing the issuance of bonds in the amount not to exceed $9,800,000. And there's a fair amount of detail that's set forth in Section 3 of what the mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized and directed to sign and execute various documents, as well as the various forms of financing documents, and this bond ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption.
Thank you, Rob, for reading the ordinance 2020-14 on first reading. Any council comment at this time?
Yes, mayor, would you, for those at home, just briefly explain that the city of Lebanon is not paying for anything?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Mike, for the opportunity to explain that. So essentially, what's happening is that we are partnering with the city, or with the New Cold. So instead of them offering a tax abatement, they are essentially, we are essentially working with them to essentially cosigning on a loan, almost essentially where they are, their own tax increment that they generate in the Business Park, essentially is what is being pledged back to pay the revenues on this bond. So it's just a different financing structure than just a standard tax abatement. We've done this before with other companies like Scott Barrett as well, so it's not something that we've not done before in the Lebanon Business Park. It's just a, again, it's a different financing structure that some companies prefer. So it's, it's no, it's like I said, it's not something new that we've done. We've done this before, it's just a different, different structure for us.
Thank you.
Yep, great point, Mike. Any other discussions or comments? Okay, ordinance 2020-14 has been around on first reading, and we will take that up at our next meeting, which will be November 23rd. Next up is, actually, do I have consent to go out of order from council? Consent? Okay. Let's go to item E here. I think we did some quickly. This is the support letter of approval, County Road 100 South and County Road 400 East. And this is Kevin Krulich, to introduce this.
Thank you. What we have here today is a support letter for the improvement of the intersection of County Road 100 South and County Road 400 East. If you might remember, a year ago, there was a fatality at this, this corner. This was, at that time, was a county-controlled intersection. The county did turn it into a four-way stop, and that did help improve the safety of that intersection. As we began to look at that intersection, and there's still some issues with sight visibility and, and other issues associated with the geometry there, we'd like to do something further. So we've been working with our friends at the county to look at that intersection, and also now look at that intersection as, as associated with the Hinky Land Development Project Waterford that will be going in up to that southwest corner of that intersection. This, this intersection is, is ripe for a roundabout-type improvement at that location. So it's also something that the Hinky Development Team likes the idea of, of really sort of bookending that northeast corner of their development with a roundabout that will signify that you are entering the Waterford Development. It will help improve traffic flow coming down 400 South that will eventually go through their development and to, hopefully to a new proposed interchange along I-65. So that's what's really prompted this. We worked with our consultants to sort of do some initial, initial planning on this area and see what would be warranted. This was associated with our traffic impact study that we're currently doing, and now the county is sort of picking up the reins and picking up the ball, if you will, running with it from here. They are going to be the ones that will actually, actually submit a traffic safety improvement application, grant application for the highway for the improvement of that. So this HSIP grant application is something that will come up this, later this fall. This is a unique application that is really associated with intersections that are considered dangerous or unsafe. This is really about safety improvements. So the county is going to be submitting this application since they control three quarters of the intersection. The city only controls one, and, but we are looking to issue our letter of support. You'll notice there that there is some statements on there about financial support of this project. We are not asking you to pledge anything, we're not asking you to appropriate anything. Exactly what we think will happen here is if we are, if the county is successful in getting the HSIP grant, which is 90-10 money, it's a little different than most federal grants, only requires a 10% local match. We have already talked to the developer. They will either participate in paying that 10% because they like the idea of the gateway feature that this will bring to their development, or we will collect monies from them through our traffic impact study that would, that would cover the 10% match. So essentially, we get a new roundabout at that location, free of charge, and it will then serve as a gateway into the new Waterford Development. And ultimately, the most important thing is really improve the safety of that intersection. I think you can all imagine, we're going to see a lot more traffic coming through that intersection as Waterford develops. So all we're asking for tonight is just your support of this letter and your signature on this letter, and then we will get this to the county, they will include this with their grant applications, and move this forward through the grant application process.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin from the council? Dick?
Kevin, our annexation of that area, did it not take in the intersection down there?
We annexed up to the intersection, so the, yeah, so when we, when we do annex, it does annex the right-of-way adjacent to an annexation. So, you know, the southern leg of that intersection and the western leg of that intersection would be part of the, would now be in the, in the city's right-of-way. The northern and eastern legs of that intersection would be still county right-of-way.
So basically, we got the south and the west side.
South and west, yes.
And they've got the, they've got everything north of that and east.
Yes.
Right. Just the road itself, right?
Just the road itself.
Because once we annex it, we take over to the right-of-way to the other side of the road.
When we annex it, we, when you annex a piece of property, you are also annexing any right-of-ways adjacent to that piece of property.
Right.
Now, there are no established right-of-ways out there, it's county, it's county roads. So effectively, law, state law would say that you, there is, there is an apparent right-of-way for the width of, no more. So this process would acquire right-of-way on all four legs of that intersection for the construction of the intersection improvements.
Right. Okay. I was just trying to make sure, because I knew we got the right-of-way out there.
Yes. I think I said three quarters. Technically, half of it is our right-of-way, half of it is the county's, but they're the ones.
No, actually, actually, we get the road. We get, the whole road is ours.
Right, but I'm saying, two legs coming into the intersection are the county's. The north leg and the east leg.
Yeah, the north leg and the east leg, or, yeah, the north leg and the east leg coming to that intersection is still the county's.
Correct.
Yeah, we have, we have the, basically, we have the intersection, everything to that.
Correct.
According to the annexation.
Any further discussion, questions? At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the support letter for the county's effort to receive federal funding for the intersection at County Road 100 South and County Road 400 East.
I'm making motion that we approve the letter of support.
Okay, we have motion approves, a second.
Second.
Our motion is a second, I think it was John down there.
John.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that project is approved. Thank you, council.
Unless Tanya has a copy of the original letter, if you could see her before you leave tonight, that would be great.
We're sending it around.
Happening to you.
All right, next up, I'm going to go back to our original agenda here. Item B, Resolution 2020-09, Lebanon Utilities Land Swap with the Lebanon Parks Department. And we have Ed from Utilities.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, I'm Ed Vaskel with Lebanon Utilities, the general manager, and I'm here tonight to ask you for your approval of Resolution 2020-09 that would give the mayor and I authority to sign a swap of parcels between us, Lebanon Utilities, and the Parks Department. Little background on this is Lebanon Utilities acquired a parcel of land on 501 North Noble Street, right next to the park, as part of our 69KV project five years ago. Now, that is a good parcel of land for future development for us, but it's a better parcel for the Parks Department, and it's very useful for them as a potential entrance. So we worked with them and saw the value of it to the Parks Department and the community, and we want to swap a parcel of land in the park to put our ground storage tank. We need ground storage tank for our water system in that part of the town to support future development, and it's mutually beneficial because the Parks Department, it fits in with their master plan. They like the idea. I'd like to thank Kevin Krulich and John Messenger for working with us on this. We've had many meetings about it, and we also discussed it, the joint session with the city council and the Parks Department a few weeks ago, and last week, Ryan Ossinger made a presentation for the Parks Board at their public meeting. So we vetted it with the Parks Board last week, and I just wanted to open up if there are any questions.
Yep. Any questions for Ed from the council?
Not this time. Excuse me, Ed. Ed, when you appeared before the Park Board, was there any concessions or anything between Utilities and Park Board for this transaction? Did you guys make any agreements to do anything?
There was discussion where they wanted to make sure that we complied with their, their plan to connect up the paths, and we were agreeing to that. We're still working on the legal description to where exactly the lines are going to be. And Lori Gross asked if we tear the building down, and we were amenable to that. We would have to tear the building down anyway if we put the tank there on Noble Street, but we have to get our board approval to do that, but I'm confident, I support that and confident they'll do it.
How about roadway? Do trucks can get into? You guys going to build a road through there to manage the power line?
We're not going to build a road, we're going to connect up the existing path according to the master plan with the Parks Department, so. And they're going to reinforce the road going through there because there's going to be, because this is a ground storage tank, it's not going to be a big tower like the other two around town. There's going to be facade on it where it fits in with the buildings, looks like a building, and there's going to be booster pumps there to pump water in, out of the tank, and water treatment to boost the chlorine for the water going further away from the source. It's going to be a good improvement for our system.
Well, also, when you put that in there, it'll be surrounded by trees on both, all sides, except for the one entrance.
Yes, we're going to remove as little trees as possible and plant new ones because we want it to have it screened so there's not a big unsightly building that people are going to see, and what they do see is going to fit in with the natural environment.
Okay. Any other, any other questions, sir?
I do have kind of a general question. I don't know, John, you may know the answer. The Park Board, when they had met with us, we all had a meeting. I know some of the members of the Park Board kind of talking about what all was involved, when swapping the land, so I just wanted to make sure that... You guys going to build a road through there to manage the power line?
We're not going to build a road. We're going to connect up the existing path according to the master plan with the Parks Department. So, and they're going to reinforce the road going through there because there's going to be, because this is a ground storage tank, it's not going to be a big tower like the other two around town. There's going to be the sod on it where it fits in with the buildings, looks like a building. And there's going to be booster pumps there to pump water in, out of the tank and water treatment to boost the chlorine for the water going further away from the source. It's going to be a good improvement for our system.
Well, also, when you put that in there, it'll be surrounded by trees on both, all sides, except for the one entrance?
Yes, we're going to remove as little trees as possible and plant new ones because we want it to have it screened so there's not a big unsightly building that people are going to see. And what they do see is going to fit in with the natural environment.
Any other, any other questions, sir?
I do have kind of a general question. I don't know, John, you may know the answer. The Park Board, when they had met with us, we all had a meeting. I know some of the members of the Park Board kind of talking about what all was involved, when swapping the land. So I just wanted to make sure that that information has been agreed upon before we go ahead and sign. I mean, you know, what, like, to piggyback off what you were saying, what was discussed is in legal, so the swap goes smoothly. You know what I mean?
Right. I think the general managers, your attorneys and Rob are going to work out an agreement, and then Ed's asking for approval. What the Park Board approved was the land swap with reinforcing the road, as he said, that's already existing, going back to the building, and improving the drainage that's down there because it's kind of in swampland, and also attaching our bike pedestrian trail to attach that to that road. There again, there was a discussion if they would go ahead and tear down the existing buildings at 501. That's all they asked for.
Okay.
And Ryan said you would check, I believe, with their utility board, as long as that's done, the Park Board unanimously voted for that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for Ed?
Just a, for me, maybe just, I'm missing something here. So has the Utilities also signed something similar to this? Have they already met and signed? Or are we first? How's this working?
I think how it works is you're going first. You're just giving us authority to sign the parcels and the deeds when they're ready. Because what you'll see is the drawings included as part of your packet, they're very general and vague. And there's going to be, because we're actually moving some lines at the request of Parks Department to accommodate some of our input. So when, so when we have the actual deed, then, as I understand it, the utility service board will approve it, and they'll give me the authority to sign a deed, and then being there, they're already assigned a deed, and then it will be done in that way. And I could, I guess, refer to the city attorney if I said anything wrong. I think that's about how it works legally.
Actually, let's, let's may have Rob read it, and then we can, I may, I may have...
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's fine. Go ahead and read it, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Again, this is Resolution Number 2020-09, which is exchanging properties between the city of Lebanon and Lebanon Utilities. The city, through its Parks Board, is the owner of a certain parcel of real estate generally located at the northeast corner of what is commonly known as Abner Longley Park in Lebanon. And it's approximately two acres, and it's depicted on Exhibit A. The utility is the owner of a certain parcel of real estate, which, again, is commonly known as 501 East Noble Street. And it's approximately .96 acres, and it's further depicted on Exhibit B and Exhibit C. So the city desires to obtain the utility parcel for the purposes of expanding the public access point to the Abner Longley Park. And the utility, again, desires to acquire future site for water system improvements. Therefore, be it resolved that the city agrees to transfer its ownership in the city parcel, again, is generally depicted on Exhibit A, to the utility, along with an access easement that is contingent upon the Utilities' transfer of its ownership interests in the utility parcel as depicted on Exhibit B. This resolution also authorizes and directs the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this resolution.
Yeah, so to clarify, so we adopt this resolution, Utilities will adopt a similar resolution, actually, I believe it's a joint resolution. So they'll adopt this resolution as well, which then at that point essentially empowers me to work out the details of the land swap with Utilities and essentially put the agreement in writing that then I can execute. So, which then, at that point, though, I believe there will be final action as well to do, to accept the deed or that Board of Works. So eventually, the Board of Works will have to accept the deed from Utilities to kind of complete that final transfer. So this essentially is giving us the blessing to move forward, to put all the fine details together, and then allow me to execute that once that's complete.
Will all those conditions be put in that resolution too?
Yes, I'll make sure John's happy with it. I'll make sure the, Rob's happy with it, and then I can run it, I can share it with council once we've got the kind of final order, and make sure you guys are comfortable with it as well, too. So, I mean, obviously, we're on the same team, and so we're all kind of working to make sure everybody's on the same page.
But they agreed, both of them did.
Yep.
And I just want both sides to know what they're getting.
Exactly right. Yep. Anything else?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning 2020-9?
Nine.
Thank you, sorry. Lost my agenda, my iPad froze up. Any other questions? Okay. At this time, then, we would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2020-09.
I move we approve ordinance, or, sorry, Resolution 2020-09.
We have a, we have a motion to approve Resolution 2020-09, is our second?
Second.
Motion, second? Sir? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, Resolution 2020-09 is approved. Thank you, Ed, appreciate it. Thank you, council. Okay, next item up, we don't have Chief Bats tonight, but we do have Lieutenant Hendricks with the Department of Fire to talk about this item. There were some emails going around concerning this. Again, there's a, has been a need in our fire service for, we believe, some time concerning how do we serve our unhydrated areas of town. And so Chief Bats and Weyer, and Deputy Chief Baird, or Baird and Weyer, they've all been kind of looking at how to open up. And we had a kind of a unique opportunity come up last week, I think in the last week. There was a used pumper tanker, and actually, I'm going to have Lieutenant Hendricks come forward to give us maybe some more specifics that I don't know off the top of my head. Essentially, this is, the discussion tonight is how do we, if we want to move forward on the purchase of this vehicle, how we would go about doing that. So go ahead and talk about what, what the truck looks like.
Yes, what they're, what they're looking at right now is a 2007 Crimson International Pumper Tanker. The, it only has about 85, or just over 8,500 miles on it, and there's about 1,000 hours on the pump. So really, this truck, I mean, a tanker, they do last longer than a normal fire apparatus just for the fact that they don't go on every single run. So even though this is 13 years old, it's still, it's in great shape. I think a lot of you guys got the email that shows the pictures of this truck. It is a, it is a pretty nice second truck, and as long as it passes their inspection when they go down there, I think it's going to be a good truck for us. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have about it.
Remind me what the price was for it?
The asking price was 201,000.
201, okay.
What did a new one cost?
Anywhere 300,000 to 400,000. So I mean, it's a really good break. And I'm sure all you guys know, anytime you have a used vehicle, if it's a good vehicle, they're going to disappear pretty fast. And so this is one of those things, we really need to jump on it if we're going to, just because, like I said, it's, it's a good, it's a, it looks like it's a really good piece of equipment, and we don't think it's going to last very long, so.
That's why they drove to Alabama. So...
How many other cities are looking at it?
I'm sorry?
How many other cities are looking at it?
I don't know at this time.
Is there a cost to bring it back up to speed when, if we were to get it?
As far as I know, it's all ready to go right now. There might be some minor things to do to it, but I believe it's ready to go right now, just getting it here and putting it in service.
From my understanding, Chief Bats said that we just need to change the logos on it, and that we can roll it out. So that seems pretty ready, ready to roll already.
Yeah, just some pretty minor, pretty minor stuff.
Yep.
That's a practical question. I've not bought a pumper truck in a long time, so what's the, what, is there like different capacities, or is a pumper truck always the same capacity no matter what?
Well, like I said, this is going to be a pumper tanker, and this is going to be an apparatus that's going to be used in some of the nine hot, non-hydrated areas that we use, or that we, that we cover. We do cover up in Clinton Township a little bit, and now we also cover down in Harrison Township where we don't have fire hydrants. A tanker is basically our water source. Right now, our, our fire engines we have, we carry 1,000 gallons of water on them. So it's quite a bit of water, but when you're out in a place where you don't have a hydrant close to you, it's not that much water. This tanker, it, it's 2,800 gallons, so we're, like I said, our engines right now are 1,000 gallons, this one is 2,800. So we're bringing, bringing an extra 1,800 gallons of water with us with this.
Well, I, I understand, but what I'm saying, do the pumper tankers come in different sizes? In other words, is this a common size, or is it smaller? Or, I don't know.
Yeah, this is, this is a pretty common size. I mean, you'll see a tanker, I can't remember exactly what the NFPA recommends as a tanker size. But yeah, 2,500, anything over about 2,000 gallons to, you know, 3,000 gallons, bigger than that, it just, they get a little obscene just because they're so large and heavy, you can't really take them a whole lot of places. But yeah, this is right in the, this is right in that ballpark.
Yeah, remember, a gallon of water weighs eight pounds, right? So they're kind of limited on weight and what they can do from a size-wise. So, and this is, and this has been a hole in our system. We do, we annexed quite a bit of area back in 2011, a lot of area that has no fire hydrants, right? So how do we respond? Right now, we essentially have to rely on mutual aid with other departments because we don't have, you know, we have 1,000 gallons that we can bring with our trucks, but if there's a significant house fire or even a field fire, you know, we may run out of water on it, some of that stuff. So that's kind of the, the need for it. So before we go, any...
Are there any more pumper trucks that you're talking about that's in our agreement with the other agencies around?
I'm sorry, just repeating...
Does someone else furnish a pumper truck now?
So Center, I believe Center Township has one currently.
Yeah, Center Township does have one, and we, we do rely on that quite readily just because it is close to us.
What size?
What's that?
What size?
I believe it's 20, 25 or 2,600. It's right in that neighborhood also.
But theirs is very old, right?
That truck that they have, it is an older truck. It's, I think it's well over 20 years old at this point. And once again, it's not our truck, so we can't really, can't hop forward all the time.
It, it all goes back to just making sure we have a consistent response and knowing that, make sure that we, we, when we have an emergency like that, we know how to respond, right? And by having this piece of equipment in our fleet, we know that we can respond in efficient and the best manner possible, right? Because it's possible, too, that Center could respond to a fire, that they don't necessarily respond with their tanker, they may respond with their other apparatus, which we actually need the tanker, right? So there, there's some challenges sometimes working in between two different departments on stuff like that.
And just to kind of, just to kind of tell you a little bit about this also, when we, if we have a house fire in one of these non-hydrated areas, the way we're going to respond right now is we're going to respond with two of our engines. So we're going to show up with 2,000 gallons of water and all the, all the firemen. But if we have this tanker in service, we'll be, we will be able to respond with one fire engine. So we're bringing 1,000 gallons with that, and then we'd be able to respond with this tanker with 2,800 gallons and the same men. So basically, we're going to show up with the same amount of men or same amount of firefighters on scene and an additional 1,800 gallons right off the bat without relying on any outside source.
Which, and how, I mean, how fast are these pumps? Just to give them an idea of how much water that actually lasts you for.
Well, like the fire engines that we have right now, they're, they're considered a 1,500 gallon pump a minute. So if we bring 1,000 gallons, if, if we're pumping 1,500 gallons a minute, we're, we're going to run out of water real fast. And on this tanker, it also comes with a dump tank separate, and that way, you basically show up, we can set this dump tank out, we can dump all the water into that tank, and then we could go get more water while that dump tank, it's basically like a big pool, is sitting there with the water, and then we can suck out of that with our other engines, or pull the water out of that with our other engines. And so it's just a way to, it's just a way to get a lot of water there in a shorter amount of time.
Okay. Want to have Tanya touch on the financing? I know there was some discussion of what fund do we need to do this from, or if we wanted to do it, how we do it?
I mean, I know, I know numerous council members, I've read what you sent in. What we had to do was, we had to give the, the fireman that went today a check for $5,000 for earnest money. So we paid that from lit because, you know, Chief Bats was like, we don't know where it's coming from yet because we hadn't met until tonight. So I, after talking to the mayor, I just sort of took a leap and took it out of lit. You know, that can change, but what's going to happen is, yes, there's a price of 201,000. Chuck was also going to try and hang, haggle with them to see if he can get it for a little bit less. So once they get back, if they get back with the truck, we will wire the full amount to them, and they'll tear up the $5,000 check. So it was just, you know, instead of just driving the truck off their fire department lot, this was just a down payment, just in case.
I would just say between the food and beverage and the...
Okay. So between food and beverage and lit, the lit does not have to go to DLGF because it's a home-ruled fund and it's, it's not approved by them. So we don't have to do any extra approval with that. So it's, the money's there, so that's what we can use if you so see fit.
There's a, what, about a $3 million balance in that right now?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So could we, okay, with that, with that, could we go ahead and, I'm going to suggest that we kind of make a mo, make a motion to go ahead, or the mayor's going to be in communication with the fire chief to let us know whether they're picking it up and bringing it home and so forth, and you will know what that amount is. Can, should we go ahead and approve, subject to the, to the chief and the, and the mayor's negotiation for the vehicle, in amount of...
Not to exceed 201, right?
Two, 206,000 to make it from the five or...
Well, it's, 201, 201. Because that's, that's the maximum. Yeah, so...
The five is going to go away.
Okay. Not to exceed 201,000 dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's the thought. Like, so again, we'll, I'll talk with probably Chief Bats tomorrow. He'll kind of say, yes, we liked it, yes, or no, we didn't. And then if that's the case, then they'll bring it home, and then we'll finish the, the rest. So really, the decision tonight is, one, do you want to purchase this? And if so, do we want the food and beverage fund or lit? And because we don't, again, because they're both home-ruled funds, we don't have to do disappropriation or anything like that, we can just say we make an appropriation out of, out of lit tonight for that.
Well, I think, I think it's something we need, and I would make a motion that we go ahead and prove it to come out of 201,000, so, not to exceed 201,000, based on the mayor's recommendation and the, and the chief's negotiations, and to come out of lit.
Okay. We do have a motion, but I want to get, and there's a second. Is there any more discussion or comments? Mike, you have?
I was just going to say it should come out of lit.
Okay. So we have a motion to, for not to, not to exceed 201,000 dollars from Public Safety Lit?
I just have one question.
Yep.
How much have you guys put in there about what you have to do to the fire truck to make it look like yours?
To make it, to make it look like ours?
Yeah, for the decals and whatever else you put on.
I'm not sure. Obviously, when they get down there, they're going to be able to see if they need to do anything else, but just the normal, you know, re-stripping and putting our logo on it and that kind of stuff. I mean, you're not talking, you're not talking a whole lot now.
I think Chief can find that in his budget, if I had to guess. I bet Chief can find that in his budget if he needs to.
He could, that's what I was wanting.
So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion is adopted. Thank you, council.
Can I make a request? Can I make a request? If the chief gets back with you within the next day or two or something, could you send out a notification to the council as to if we did get it or if we did not get it?
Absolutely, yep. I will, I will keep you guys apprised of what happens with the, with that, with the truck.
Thank you.
I think they're to meet in the morning. Is that not right?
Yeah, I believe so, because they left this morning about 10 o'clock or so. I think it's about an eight-hour drive.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure I'll get a call or text. I'll let you guys know for sure. Okay. Okay, that is item C. And last item up, yes, thank you Lieutenant Hendricks. Next item up is item D, downtown Christmas light funding. Joe is not, he was hoping to make it, doesn't look like he's going to make it. I do have his presentation, but I know Dick, you asked him to have, to come up with something.
I don't think I've seen a presentation, but him and I talked a few weeks ago about some additional Christmas lighting in the downtown area, and we were talking about some, want me to go up there?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, just to clarify, so, Joe put together a package from the same people that did our current 16 feet? John, how tall is our tree again?
26.
26 feet, our current 26 foot tall Christmas tree.
Did you guys turn on the?
Yep, there we go.
There you go.
So, the thought would be to have four 14-foot trees in addition to our current one. One of those would go in each of our circular planters around the courthouse square, so kind of on the anchors. And then we would have 30, excuse me, 35 12-foot garland, garland, one white kits, which is what Dick is showing up there, and then another 32 of them at, or those are 25-foot sections and another 32 at 20-foot. So, this would do all of the light poles downtown, as well as the light poles down West Main Street as well, too, I believe.
The idea is kind of create a look kind of like that in the downtown with the lighting. And, and like the mayor said, we were discussing with putting in the circle areas, putting some different sized Christmas trees that kind of match the big tree a little bit, maybe one color or something, and just trying to make it a little more attractive downtown. And I think the price it came up to was just under 25,000.
Yeah, the total was 24,704.95 was the quote.
Yeah, okay. And, and I think that's something that we ought to, to try to do, to try to keep making the downtown a little more beautiful during the holidays. We had to make it with our new steakhouse downtown and the other restaurants that's supposed to be coming across on the east side of the square in the future here. These things are nice, be nice additions to the downtown in the holiday season, I think, so. I think I communicated with Tanya, there, there's money available in our Casino River Boat, there could be an option there, we could use that, or which is, we could also use food and beverage. So, the Casino River Boat would be an additional appropriation we would have to do. The food and beverage, we could make that decision right now, but if you so desire. But I think this is just something we can do to enhance our look to our community downtown.
And it would, if we did, I believe, move tonight, we could get them in time where they could be put up and installed for this season as well, too. Our tree, our big trees already up.
Yeah, I said, make sure that, they're, they're basically waiting for us to make a decision tonight, so he can call and make a decision in the morning and let them know that we can still get them here, I think, by Thanksgiving and get them up for the parade season.
Logistics wise, does anybody know if the, are there plugs on for the garland that lights up already, like installed on the poles already?
Electric's in the pole, right?
Like electric? It is, like they plug it in and that won't have to be anything additional or anything?
Yep, that's, that's part of, kind of, John, you're the guys that put it up, or Kevin, I guess you guys?
Along with that, I had a question.
What was your question again?
If it, if?
Yeah. Go ahead.
The garland?
Yeah, the garland that lights up, is, are there plugs already or something that?
Yeah, there are, and most of them, there's four, I believe, the one on Montgomery Ward or that, the Meridian Street, those are not, there are no electrical plug-ins. Also, in front of Callen's cupboard, those new lighting, they did not have it either, so, yeah, most of them do, all the way down, I believe all of them do, down Main Street. We weren't planning on doing that. We were going to do downtown with all the lighting this year and the garland wrapping, and then in the future, when the trees and all this, we'll store it for this season, and then we'll kind of expand it next year so everybody can see, yes, we'll have garland coming down, but the Utilities is going to help us to install all the lighting around. We'll have quite a few more than last year. Last year, we only put them up on the corners, we'll light them up a lot more this year, and then we'll light them up Main Street as we go next year. That was our plan.
Do those large containers at the corners, do they have electric in them, or do we have to?
Was your question? I'm sorry.
The large, four planters on the corners, do they have electric in them or nearby?
No, there's no electric in them. We would have to run wiring and such, there's nothing, we aren't going to bore. We thought about running the electrical straight across, running it behind the, what do you call it?
There's conduit.
Yeah, there's conduit, but we'll run it across, so we, we can take care of that.
Okay. I did think it did, but I didn't know.
There is not currently, though, electricity.
We got enough storage space for this extra stuff?
Well, if we get Thompson Street, it'd sure help us a lot, I'm just saying. Rob, help me out there.
There's always an extra in there.
No, it really is. That is, the tree that we have now currently, a lot of space, a lot of space. Mice didn't get to it. We have to wrap all that. Now, we'll have to wrap four more, but I, I think it's great for the community and, yeah, that is an issue.
That's why we're working on getting Thompson Street for you, John.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other questions?
No, I, just, I'll make a motion.
What, any other? Go for it, Mike.
I'll say we make a motion to fund these Christmas lights not to exceed 25,000 and to come out food and beverage.
Okay.